Okay, I'm gonna spread out.
He sent us that message.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just get a little more. Put your feet up.
The guy from MSP might be a few minutes late.
I have a divider that's hard.
MSP?
So I always kind of like this.
The TIF.
I just thought you were like.
It doesn't matter. A lady's brand.
Okay, it's five o'clock, we'll get started. I'll call the Village Board of Oregon to order for Monday, July 21st, 2025. I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Kirchdorfer?
Here.
Knipfer?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Van Campen?
Here.
And Trustee Higgins is absent.
Thank you. Item three, approval of June 6th, 2025, Village Board meeting minutes if correct, corrections and mistakes if any. Look for motion to approve, Paige and Tom, Quirkson's comments.
Just to clarify, it's July 7th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a, there was an amended agenda.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Item four, public appearances, comments and communications. Item for discussion and or possible action. A public comment, this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Otherwise, the agenda will proceed as posted. Have anyone here for public comments tonight? Public comments? Hearing none. For B, application for Class B beer and Class C liquor, wine only alcohol beverage license for Sam Cassa, hope I got that right, LLC Doing Business as Sonny's Kitchen. I will open the public hearing, this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board related to the topic at hand. The time limit of three minutes per speaker is set unless otherwise modified by the village board. Other staff comments on this item?
I, I don't have any other comments than what's presented in the packet.
Okay.
I will say that there are some family of Sam in the audience, right? Because Sam is out of the country.
Oh, okay.
If you have questions, he's here to.
Okay. Any comments from the petitioner or not required?
Unless he has to.
Great. Okay. I will then close the public hearing and move to item B two, Village Board Discussion and Possible Action on the Applications. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Motion by Tom, second by Amanda. Questions, comments, Amanda, please.
I was just gonna say, I appreciate the, the comments that are in the packet addressing the concerns that the, this, this violation is seven, eighteen years old now. I, I don't have any, any concerns. I appreciate though, there was a little letter in there addressing that, so I'm good.
Anybody else? Okay, we're motion by Tom, second by Amanda, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you, thanks for coming in. Item four B, tax incremental financing application and affordable housing fund requests. Pardon me, there may be delay on this item.
No, he just showed up.
Oh, okay, thank you. Start again, tax incremental financing application and affordable housing fund request submitted by MSP Real Estate Incorporated for the proposed Oregon Main Apartments Project located at 169 203 and 215 South Main Street. Staff recommendation, motion of direct staff and consultants to proceed with financial analysis and financial arrangement and negotiation. Let's have the presentation first, please. Yes, state your name and.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, Tom Denaway with MSP Real Estate. It was a bit of an adventure getting here, drove in from Minneapolis and thankfully I am a habitually early lever because there was a closure on 94 and probably one of the longest sections in between exits, so I got routed off in Menominee, which is a city I can't pronounce, and didn't get back on until about Shipaw Falls.
Oh, my goodness.
I spent about forty-five minutes just sitting in the middle of a cornfield, not going anywhere. But nonetheless, I came in and I got here just in time, so. With that being said, yeah, Tom Denaway with MSP Real Estate, it's a pleasure to be here. We're talking tonight about the start of the tax increment financing process for the creation of a potential or amendment of an existing district for the proposed low income housing tax credit project that we were doing. I was before you, previously in advance of being awarded tax credits from WIDA, and we were successful in being awarded those credits. So we will be moving forward with the project, and now that starts the next phase of the project, which is going through all the planning process and city approval, so if you just want to jump to the next slide. So just a bit about MSP companies, as we're a full-service real estate development firm, we have our own construction company, we have our own development portion, which I'm a part of, and then we also have a property management department as well. And as part of the company, we also have Heritage Senior Living, which is its own entity, which has a number of senior assisted living and independent living campuses across the state of Wisconsin. So if you want to jump to the next slide, you can see we've got almost thirteen hundred, thirteen hundred fifty-five affordable apartments that we've built. Those are all senior tax credit projects, which is what we're proposing here. And in addition to that, we have nine hundred and sixty-three units of family tax credit projects, all located in Wisconsin. And then additionally, on the next page, you can see that we've got almost a thousand units of senior living under the, the Heritage Senior Living brand. And then in addition to that, a couple hundred multifamily market rate projects, as well as a small amount of office. So as I mentioned, an important part of the, of the company is the fact that we have our own onsite management, it's our own staff. That provides a continuum of care and contact for the village. As any, you know, if any issues arise in the future, there's one, one point of contact that you can reach out to, to both maintain the project as it's operational, as well as through the development phase, so. Strong application tenant selection process to ensure that we have quality residents, and our goal ultimately is a safe and inclusive community. So the project itself, this would be a senior, senior living building, this would be age restricted, fifty-five plus. I think typically we tend to target sixty-five plus residents, but by the tax credits definition, it is a fifty-five plus building. So it's about a seventy-seven thousand square foot building, three levels of residential, and then we've got one floor of underground structured parking. So there'll be about fifty structured parking spaces and then eighteen surface parking spaces, both for guests, as well as for onsite staff. It'll be approximately fifty-seven apartments, mix of one and two-bedroom units. A hundred percent of the units will be income restricted at or below the sixty percent county median income, and that's a requirement for the tax credit award. In addition to having the occupancy rooms within the building, we also have significant community amendment, amenities for the residents, including a community room, fitness area, and then we'll also have office space for our onsite staffing, as well as tenant storage, so. And then just to summarize again, we were awarded tax credits in May by WIDA. So this is the project overview, for those that are, have been keenly following the project, it's, we've actually rotated the building in its orientation of Main Street from what we were originally proposing. Right now, it's kind of a reverse L before. It was, it was rotated around to the north, where the property, you know, still front of Main Street, but the wing was on the north side of the property. We've now moved it to the south side for a couple of reasons. A big reason is the slope, the, you know, as Main Street goes downhill to the north, this allows our main entrance and our kind of patio area and our community room to be very, very close to grade. And then also, it allows our entrance to align with the property adjacent to us, which has their own driveway entrance in that same general vicinity. So it allows for more better controlled access, it allows for the entrance door site to be on the one-way portion of Main Street, which will help provide a traffic calming benefit to the development site as traffic flows in and out of it. And then it also allows the site to be, again, more at grade for the main entrance, and then have paths and stairs up to some of the street level properties and units that are on, fronting on Main Street. So we wanted to bring, the building is aligned with the adjacent properties in proximity to Main Street, but we also wanted to have that access to Main Street to provide kind of that downtown feel, kind of carry that, that design ethic, aesthetic along with the development of this site, so rotating the building solved for a lot of those. If the building was on the other end, you know, flipped vertically, there would have been a large amount of stairs to get up to that patio area, which would have been necessitated a lot of ramps and a lot of ADA accessibility construction, and it just seemed like it was, it was just a much more elegant solution to rotate the building in the manner that we have to try to achieve all the things that we'd heard from, from the village planning commission and staff and everybody. And we think we solved for that by, by rotating it in this manner. So as far as the planning process, the general development plan for the site was approved in February 2025 as part of the application for the tax credit process. And then we were back in front of the planning commission just earlier this month for a concept plan review. And then now our next step is gonna be submitting our site implementation plan, which will be due this Thursday, the 24th, for the August Planning Commission meeting. And then we are also gonna be doing a combination of the parcels in a certified survey map, and that'll be coming for the September Planning Commission. We are adjusting the boundary of the property a little bit on the northern corner. There is a driveway easement for the property to the north that's not being redeveloped, and what we're gonna end up doing is just kind of notching the boundary of our property out to put that, what is now an easement to that driveway on the property to the north, and no longer part of our property, just for, just, it's a cleaner, more, you know, final solution than maintaining an easement in perpetuity. And it allows that to be their property and their control, their access for it. And then if there's any other future redevelopment of that site, it's no longer using an easement across the property line, so. We're going through an update to the certified survey map now to incorporate that change, and we think we should be good as it relates to all the curb cuts and any setbacks from the roads as it relates to accommodating our drive line and the property boundary, even if it jogs to the south a little bit, so. Just a very, you know, technical change there, but I think something that'll ultimately make this a cleaner site without having to have an easement being tracked for the future. So with all that, as I mentioned, that'll be going in, the SIP submitted will be July 24th for the August Planning Commission. So we're here, I'm, I'm here in front of you tonight to talk about assistance from the city. Obviously, one of the main issues with doing tax credit and low income housing projects is that there is a limit on the amount of income that's available to the project, which is why the project generates affordable units for, for seniors that are income restricted. That limits the income capacity of the project, and it does result in difficulties with making these projects financially feasible. The, the WIDA tax credits provide tremendous support to the project and help to enable feasibility, but unfortunately, they don't completely solve the gap. So what we're proposing tonight is for us to continue to start the process with working with village staff and your village consultants about what forms of assistance can we evaluate for the project, and what levers can we pull to hopefully make this project feasible so that we can be successful in solving for our financial gap and getting it to a place where it's financially feasible and able to be developed. So a couple of the forms of assistance that we are hoping to evaluate and the levers that we hope to be able to be pulled to make the project feasible is first, the use of tax increment financing, either through the creation of a new district or the expansion of the city's existing district, utilization of the village affordable housing fund dollars, as well as the potential waiving of impact fees under the provision of your, your fee schedule code. Again, all this, you know, we've prepared a detailed TIF application with a performa, and we're gonna have updated information as it relates to that. We'll provide all that to village staff, as well as your consultant, and really, you know, hope to have a conversation and start that process and dive into that analysis further with your consultants. Our goal is to be a completely open book, to prepare a performa with as much detail and as much information that is known right now, share it with your consultants, share it with your staff, and really kind of have that conversation about what is achievable, what is obtainable, and, you know, what can we do to help, help make the project feasible and allow it to happen? So to begin with, just as a bit of background about tax increment financing, tax increment is really about the capture of the future revenue that is generated by the project. So this is a, a graphic here that has been borrowed from ELLERS, one of the better graphics out there. And what this does is tries to show visually the continuum of what happens during the, during the life of a TIF district. So the, on the left, on the bottom-left corner, it would be the creation of a TIF district, and that big blue chunk across the bottom that says baseline property values, that's the existing value of the property in its current state. All the value that's in that current state and all the taxes that are applicable to the property in its current state will continue to flow to the taxing jurisdictions and the dollars that they're being generated in over the life of the district. That kind of triangle piece you see at the top, that's when that new building comes online, that new building generates new taxable market value, and that future increase in value that's applicable to the development gets captured as tax increment and redirected to the village to be used to assist the project. So the fundamental foundation of TIF is the idea of the but-for finding. It's the idea that that growth in future property taxes that's being captured and redirected would not occur but for the use of the tax increment district, and that the project itself would not occur but for the use and redirection and assistance provided by that tax increment district. And I think one of the things that, you know, I know one of the things that'll be responsible and incumbent upon us as the developer to provide to both village staff, yourself, as well as your consultant, is really that financial verification that this project would not occur but for the assistance that we're seeking. And we can go about, the best way to do that is really in an objective measure, which is to go through our performa, and we can solve that financially, we can articulate that somewhat wide-open but-for question, we can articulate that very much numerically in terms of what does the cash flow of the project look like without assistance? How does it become feasible when you layer in the assistance? And that also helps to inform you as the, as the decision makers of the village, how much of the assistance is necessary, is it a reasonable amount? There's a very important piece of information that comes to you as part of that analysis, which is ensuring you as the policymakers that you're not over-incentivizing the project. So what we're hoping to do here tonight is have your approval to start that process, so that we can sit down, provide an updated, super-detailed performa information, have that conversation with your consultant, go through those conversations and that analysis, and then come back to you at the time of the public hearing for the creation of the, of the TIF district and, and lay all that out in front of you, so you can be fully confident and comfortable that the amount of assistance we're seeking is reasonable and necessary, and you can make the, the decision in front of you at that point in time. So really, tonight, it's about starting that process and getting, getting work into, getting into the nitty-gritty, if you will, of what that analysis looks like, so. But again, wanted to kind of prime, prime you all as to what that TIF process looks like, and really, what is that tax increment? And it's really the tax revenue that's generated by a project that would not have occurred but for the use of that TIF. And then if you want to jump to the next slide? So the other thing we wanted to hit on is, the, the village does have a TIF policy, and we want to, you know, provide some information for how does our project align with the policy that you've laid out in front of you that articulates when and why you would use TIF? And I think thankfully, the project aligns very well with, with the city's, with the village's policy, excuse me, I knew I was gonna do it once. So to, to start with, obviously, the project provides housing, and more importantly, it provides housing, if you could jump to the next slide, provides housing that is a hundred percent income restricted, and it's also age restricted, so it's, the goal of the project is provide housing to low-income and moderate-income residents above the age of fifty-five, preferably above sixty-five. So one of the things that is noted in here, that's a little different from the information that was in our TIF application, is in order to meet certain requirements, both for WIDA as well as some of the other assistance programs we're looking at, we have to have certain numbers of units set aside for people at certain income thresholds. So the big income thresholds are thirty percent, fifty percent, and sixty percent. So originally, we were assuming a smaller number of thirty percent units, but when we started looking at the updated Dane County Affordable Housing Fund application, which we're gonna be submitting on August 6th, which is another one of our major sources of funding for the project, that project, that application program requires that twenty percent or more of the units be set aside for people at thirty percent of the county median income. So obviously, along with the set-asides for income restrictions, our maximum rent assumptions that can be applied at each of those levels. So what we had to do in our programming of the project is take the number of fifty percent units down and bump up the number of thirty percent units to get to the twenty-one percent threshold that we're showing now for thirty percent of our units. So, excuse me, so the thirty percent income set aside, so we've got twelve units set aside at thirty percent of the county median income, that's about twenty-one percent of our project, twenty-seven percent of the units are set aside for the fifty percent county median income, and then finally, the other eighteen units or thirty-two percent of the project will be income restricted for people at sixty percent of the county median income. So there was an adjustment to the performa that we're gonna be preparing, and that'll be part of the updated information that we will submit to the village staff and your consultants, showing how that impacts cash flow. Those four units going from the fifty percent level down to the thirty percent level takes about twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars worth of annual income out of the project, which is significantly, you know, increases, significantly decreases the amount of cash flow that the project has to pay for its debt service and its operation. So that was one of the adjustments that we've had to make since the TIF application was submitted. In addition to that, one of the things that we are required to do by WIDA, and we are looking forward and happy to do, is we will be partnering with Lutheran Social Services of Wisconsin in northern Michigan. So we will be providing onsite supportive services targeted to the occupants of our thirty percent units, but it'll also be available to all, all residents of the project to provide ongoing care for people suffering from disabilities, mental health issues, really a whole host of issues for which they need supportive services. As part of our contract with this project, we'll, there will be onsite representation from Lutheran Social Services to these residents to be able to provide them with the advocacy and the help that they need in securing those additional services, so. You know, it's something that's required by WIDA, but also something that we're very happy to provide because it does make for a higher quality of development and more services to be provided to our residents. In addition to that, we're also partnering with Dane County Veterans Service Office that'll provide for vacancy referrals and assistance programming for veterans. So a portion of the building will be set aside and made available first as units can become available on the market to, to the veterans' office, to any referrals that they have. So there will be a priority of, for occupancy for, for veterans that are experiencing intermittent homelessness or, you know, need, need financial assistance. So that'll both provide assistance for them in getting housing located within the project, as well as assistance for any other services that they might need as it relates to dealing with the Veterans Affairs Office and the like. So next steps, the most important step is that we were awarded the WIDA tax credits in May 2025. We, we heard, found that out at the very end of May 2025. We've submitted our TIF application to the village, and again, we will be submitting our, both our SIP plan Thursday of this week, as well as our certified survey map in August for the September Planning Commission meeting. And finally, the next step that we are seeking tonight of you, the village board, is the authorization to begin the TIF review process, to dive further into those numbers, get yourself, your staff and your consultants up to speed on our performa and very comfortable with the performa that we'll provide them, and really to start that process, and hopefully come back to you at a public hearing with a proposed development deal. So with that, I'll turn it over for questions.
Questions? Amanda?
Yeah, I have a few.
Okay.
Cause this is, this is my neighborhood, so I hear from my neighbors about this. And first of all, I really like this project. We need senior housing badly, we, we, the services are gonna be a huge thing, the, the environmental things, the solar panels, making it, I mean, you guys have clearly put a lot of thought into this and, and made this a good project, so I just wanna say that off the bat. I noticed that, you know, you mentioned the traffic pattern, so you heard the community about that, they wanted to make sure that that was gonna continue to be safe. And the, the only other thing, there were some other things that were mentioned in those meetings, and I wonder if you could kind of address those and talk about your, your process, whether, like, how you either incorporated something for that or decided that it wasn't gonna be feasible for the project and why? Like, for example, one of the things I heard at the community meetings was trying to fit the building more into the community look, so that it seemed like it was part of the neighborhood, and people suggested putting on like a porch on the front of the building or increasing setbacks from neighbors' properties and just, if you can just address some of those concerns and why they either worked or didn't, that would be helpful.
Yes, thank you, excellent questions. To speak on the traffic, one of the traffic calming things that we did that came out of the, the rotation of the building, so hopefully that'll help with traffic calming. And then as part of the, the planning application that was submitted for, both for the concept meeting, as well as that'll be, I'm sure, part of the SIP application was, we did have a traffic study done, and it did sound like traffic generation will be fairly nominal for a building of this type, and at a lesser rate than the density that the site was actually zoned for, if it was a less traditional or more traditional multifamily development, so it'll have a lesser impact as a whole than what conversely could have been built on the site. In addition to that, as mentioned, yeah, we are going through the design of the building right now, so we are trying to incorporate a significant number of design cues as it relates to some of the downtown buildings. So we're incorporating some red colors, some, some espresso colors for some of the accent colors, as well as a Cream City brick on some of the facade that really kind of came out of my colleague Brian and I looking at a lot of the buildings, existing buildings in downtown and trying to match a lot of that design aesthetic. So a lot of that will be incorporated, it was discussed in the concept meeting at the Planning Commission in July, but it'll also be incorporated fully as part of our SIP plan. And then, as mentioned, the setback of the building, so right now, it's, it's setback a little bit farther from the road than it could be, I think, per the, per the way the ordinance is written, but we are choosing to do that because that way it aligns with the, the depth of the buildings that are on the site, I believe to the south, and maybe even potentially to the north, so it's in line with those, and that's why the building is really positioned where it was. It does create a little bit of a setback from the road, but again, it maintains that same depth. You can see on the bottom right corner that there is a patio that's on that portion of the building, so that's right outside of our community room. So I think that'll be a really nice amenity, we'll be able to have chairs and tables out there, it'll face east, so I'm sure there'll be some good sunrise views. Hopefully, people can sit out there and enjoy their morning coffee. So that's, that's where that is incorporated, and that's why that's there, I think was specifically as part of that design. And then same thing with the connection of the first floor units on the north, just a little bit, if you could just scroll up a little bit there. A big part of why we have those sidewalks and those access of those units to the street is to really provide that street connectivity, both for those units, and that's also why we moved that patio, which is also where our entrance door is gonna be, down to the south, because again, puts that more closer to grade with the sidewalk, and really tries to tie in that, that streetscape and that connection to the street, and the way that a building more traditionally downtown would.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful, those are a lot of little details that I hadn't really paid much attention to, and that says to me that you heard the community and you made some modifications, and I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So.
Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to verify something I thought I heard you say along the way, in the realignment of the building and putting the drive on the north side there, on, when it comes out, it's, it's pointing at another driveway, is that correct, or is there's a driveway right across from it? Or is there's a driveway right across from it?
To be honest, I don't know the layout well enough of what's on the east side of the street to know if it's aligned with the driveway across the east. What I was talking about, if you could scroll up just a little bit. So where our drive entrance is, just on the very northern edge of that property line, there's an easement to the property that's just to the north of us that's on the west side of the road.
Okay.
So their, their entrance to their driveway technically straddles that property line. So you can kind of see where that, you know, it's just south of where that tree is, that you can kind of see, yep, right in that cursor there. So our property line is going to be adjusted a little bit, yep, you can see the, where the easement is. So our property is just going to come across and just jog down a little bit to place that whole easement area onto their property, and then that way we don't have a cross-access easement.
Okay. Right, yeah, I do like this project as far as, you know, it really aligns with our TIP policy, it aligns with our comprehensive plan, it aligns with our downtown strategic plan, I mean, all of those things are kind of in line, so that it, this seems like a good, good project. Again, really the importance of building it into the neighborhood, it looks like you're really thinking about that and making it part of this community, so that's, I commend you on that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Lynn?
Did you have something?
Oh, I was just going to say, I pulled up the aerial image, there's, I don't know if you were concerned about driveways across the street, but there's the, the neighbors across the street. The, there's not a driveway that's going to kind of align right across the street with where their entrance is planned. So one is kind of up further to the north and then the property in the corner, the driveway is actually off Elm, so there's no extra driveway off North Main. And then Amanda, the traffic, like, study that they did is included in the Planning Commission packet, and then also if you wanted to watch any of that, they, they did kind of talk about the architecture and things quite a bit at the Planning Commission meeting the other week, too.
Thank you, thanks for doing that.
I have a couple of questions. Again, I'll start by saying, love it, senior housing, need it, big fan, always been, spot on. Quick question for village staff. I believe that the motion that we're discussing right now is sort of the green light to go ahead and start having discussions. The piece about asking for part of our Affordable Housing Fund, is that separate than this discussion? Where does that fall into this process?
It's all, all together in one package. We'll, we'll review the whole request and all their financials as one and decide what's an appropriate level of funding and from what sources, yep.
So it's kind of a holistic package of financial requests?
Yep.
Got it, okay. In reviewing your TIF application, I think it's great. I should preface by saying that I am the village board's representative on the Sustainability Committee, which is why, of course, I headed right for the environmental sustainability portion and why I gave you grief about it last time. So I appreciate some of the additions, I think that they're fantastic. I will continue to ask, you know, for stronger work on this. The, the solar piece is, is great in terms of a building this size. It's, it's not a lot, but it's something, and so I commend that. One question I have on this is, there is a phrase, I don't know, Lauren, if this matters, it's on page 66, says the solar array will be sized so that it either offsets 20% or more of the total building annual energy load, or that it offsets a minimum of 70% of the common area. Is that a choice we're making about whether it offsets to the building common spaces or the total energy load? Or is that just sort of a way for us to conceptualize what these solar panels would capture?
Yeah, excellent question, and that language is pulled directly from the, the Green Build Gold Plus certification.
Oh.
So that's, that's where the sizing of the solar ray came from.
Okay.
And I don't remember which of the two metrics we're solving around, and I haven't been involved in the, the construction planning of it.
Sure.
But I do know that we are meeting the Gold Plus Certification and including the amount of solar panels to meet one of those two thresholds.
Okay.
And I'm guessing since they're both, you know, it's kind of an either or threshold for the certification.
Right.
I'm guessing they must assume that they're probably about of equal value, otherwise I don't think they would have taken it in such a manner.
Okay.
So yeah, there will be a, there will be solar on both the roof, on the western-facing portion of the roof, as well as the solar ray that'll be ground mounted, so.
Yeah, and that was my second question. Is that on the image somewhere where we could see where that solar array will be, or?
Yeah, it's just to the west of the, the drive axis there, so that's that box there, and we haven't exactly sized it, and I think our landscaping plan will incorporate some of that more.
Okay.
We were on design call, I'm, I'm on my way out here with our landscape architect, as well as our architect, going through all the comments from the Planning Commission, making sure we're incorporating all of those. So there will be some changes, that's why we don't have, I don't have an elevation in here yet, because we're still trying to incorporate some of the changes that we heard from the Planning Commission at the concept meeting, so moving some of the, some of the accent colors around and trying to incorporate those.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, I only have one last question. Along the same lines in the sustainability, there is a nod to engaging food waste composting company. This might be early days for you to answer this question, which is totally fine. Do you expect that that will be a part of the building amenity or simply a, an option for residents to engage in themselves, one-on-one?
I think it's something, and I, we did look into that project a little bit, I don't, I remember you, you talking about it certainly. I think it's something that we will have our asset management people reach out to when we're closer to opening it, so that it would be, I, I anticipate it would be something that would, it would be managed through, through asset management as opposed to, you know, to make it available via them as opposed to having 57 different units all calling and determining if they're going to participate on their own or not.
Yeah.
So I think the goal will be to have asset management reach out, out of that program, and then be the ones that would then market it to the, to the residents of the building to see if they're inclined in, in participating, so.
Great, love that, thank you.
And then also to your other point, we did look out, look up the, the charge of Dane County RFP.
Yes.
The application window had closed in the early June before we'd gotten far enough in our design, so we, we will definitely keep an eye on that and apply to that just as soon as their next round of funding becomes available.
It sounds like it'll be mid-August.
Okay, we'll keep an eye out for that, thank you.
Yeah, if we get it, we'll send it to you as well.
Please.
And Lynn, Amanda, please.
Yeah, sorry, I just had one quick, this is more a comment than a question, but one of the things I noticed on the TIF application is that this project is anticipated to result in about 86 new residents within the village. And I just kind of wanted to clarify that one of my hopes for this project is that it's a resource for older people who already live in Oregon so that they can stay in Oregon, because there are some seniors that are struggling to pay their property taxes or stay in their homes, and that, that some of these slots or apartments are going to be filled by people from here. And, you know, there may be some people who come out to, you know, from another municipality, but, but the point is new residents could come from new families coming in to buy the homes that older people are selling so that they can move into this place. Because I think we do need this resource for our current residents. So that, just to be clear for anybody watching, that is how I envision this happening, and I hope that's kind of what you had in mind, too.
Yes, certainly, we, we certainly hope that that's the case, and that's really one of the beauties of these, of these types of developments is, you know, when you create opportunities for housing on the end of the life cycle of the housing continuum, it has that, you know, kind of multiplier effect of hopefully being occupied by a resident of Oregon, and then puts their existing home back on the property, you know, back onto the market and allows for a growth opportunity and new families to move within the city of Oregon, our village of Oregon. Certainly, I don't believe we have the ability to, you know, from our teneting qualification standpoint to be able to restrict it. You know, certainly, we, we would love to if we could, but we can't. But our, our, you know, certainly, our, our goal and our hope is, is that this really creates a new, new opportunity for housing for existing residents of the village, and then that creates additional growth within the village by new residents occupying those existing homes, coming back on the market and really kind of creating that, that cycle of, of housing opportunity within the village, so certainly, certainly our hope and our goal as well.
Anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Phil, I just wanted to mention, too, we do, with all of our new developments, I always reach out to the case managers at the Senior Center to make sure they understand kind of the requirements and get any kind of marketing information, content information, and already connected MSP with Rachel at the Senior Center, we'll make sure once things get up and running and there's a, you know, waitlist or some kind of content info that they have all of that as well, so they can make sure to direct local residents looking for housing to that resource quickly.
You're amazing, thank you so much.
Thank you, yeah, as, as soon as we get leasing and starting it up and operating, we'll make sure 100% to reach out to the, to the Senior Center and make sure that it's posted there, that they're, they're aware that they can make referrals.
Anybody else? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to direct staff and consultants to proceed with financial analysis and financial arrangement negotiation. Tom? And Amanda? Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Forward to talking more.
Thank you.
For the presentation from Village Financial Advisor Ellers on 2025 Water Rate Study Phase Two, Public Service Commission Conventional Rate Case Application and Updated Long-Range Cash Flow Analysis. Staff recommendation, motion to direct staff and consultants to file test year 2025 Water Rate application with the Public Service Commission. Amanda? A and P. And we'll give Candy some time to get this set up. That's the default.
Brian, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
I can hear you, and this is, I'm so excited.
Next, we got to see him.
And are, are you going to share your screen, Brian?
I don't know if it's going to work because my computer battery is not good, so I, I did see the presentations in the pack of materials, and I'm happy to kind of verbally walk through the pack of materials.
That's perfect, yep, if you can just let us know what page you're on, Lauren will make sure we're on the correct page.
Okay, sounds good. Let me know when, when you're ready.
Are you ready?
We are ready.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for having me virtually, I apologize, I can't be in two places at once, and unfortunately, do have another municipality that needs me tonight, so again, I appreciate the virtual attendance option here. Brian Raymer with Ellers. I've been here in the past to kind of speak through the utility cash flows and prior PSC rate cases, and we're here again to kind of go through the rate case application for the water utility only. So with that, I'll get started to the first slide, which is titled Why We Are Here. And when we do look at utility rates, if you remember, we were in front of the board back in September of 2024 as part of the financial management plan process that was completed, again, September 2024, and we looked at an initial long-range cash flow analysis that did indicate another rate case was due, due to ongoing capital improvements into the utility. And if you kind of remember that presentation, one of the highlights was based on how the Public Service Commission, who regulates water utility rates in the state of Wisconsin, looks at building your rate revenues, they base it off of asset value in the system amongst other things. So kind of the longer you wait, the larger the magnitude of the one-time adjustment kind of filing the application can get, you know, because you're adding capital faster than it's depreciating, that is quite typical amongst utilities across the nation, just thinking about how expensive utility projects have gotten, and there's a need for replacement. So the simplified rate case, which is the other lever you can pull, was not enough. And at that time, that presentation did estimate going through a full rate case would yield about a 50.8% adjustment to water utility revenues. So here tonight, we're kind of going into Phase Two, in which we, you know, worked with staff to gather all of the funding information that the Public Service Commission requires to complete that application and present the results tonight. So with that, we can go to the next slide, which is labeled PSC Math Review. It has the nice chalkboard graphic on it. What we're intending to kind of educate the board here tonight is a reminder of that Public Service Commission math equation. So if somebody ever asks the question, how much revenue should we generate from user rates? In the rate-making world, in the United States, there's kind of two methodologies, the cash basis on the left and then the utility basis on the right, and the one on the right is what the Public Service Commission uses. Essentially, the cash basis, you just think about all the cash expenditures of the utility, you know, day-to-day expenses like ONM and taxes, and then your debt payments, and then the fourth one there is what's called capital funded by rates. That's basically if you pay for cash, you know, instead of using debt or other financing sources, you would typically see a utility want to continue that practice, however, you know, there can be wild variances, in some years you may decide to issue debt and therefore not use cash, or other years you have some reserves available and you are using a lot of cash to pay for projects. So due to that volatility, this methodology is not used by the Public Service Commission. Instead, they look at the same day-to-day expenses like ONM and taxes, but then instead of debt and cash-funded capital, they look at depreciation and a rate of return on your rate base. So they basically say day-to-day expenses plus depreciation, and then that fourth bucket, that rate of return is essentially, they assign a percent that every utility, when they come in for a rate case, should all be benchmarked to, and that percentage gets applied to the total asset value of your system, so that builds that cost bucket. Subtract out your non-rate revenues like water tower rents and other things like that to get your total revenue requirement. So on the next slide, we'll look to put that context into numbers. So if you want to go to the Water Rate Application Initial Results slide, this has a chart on the left of it, which kind of looks at the numbers behind each methodology. The biggest highlight on the top half are the cash bases, which is again, not what the PSC uses, is there is some, you know, higher years where we're using a lot of cash to help pay for capital expenditures, so you can kind of see, it starts to look quite negative, and this is kind of the reason why the Public Service Commission doesn't adjust your rates. You know, the rate-making should be kind of a longer-term perspective. Certainly, the cash base is just isolating a one-time, you know, point in time, and you just happen to use a lot of cash that year, you could have quite a heightened rate adjustment that really isn't necessary. However, I do find value in showing this, because you can kind of look at it holistically to identify kind of on average, where are we, and you actually kind of come out in these five years, pretty much right, right around where the point-in-time analysis for the PSC arrives, and that is, shown on the bottom half of this chart, the rightmost column is what the application yielded. We try to simplify a 36-tab deep Excel document that the PSC makes us fill out into one simple column on the bottom right-hand side of this chart, and the application results was about a 51.42% needed change in operating revenues, and again, that's pretty close to where we were back in September. In terms of our projection, we had 50.8, we had 51.4. A couple of things of note is right, we're kind of dotting the i's and crossing the t's from our projection to actuals, you know, in terms of what some of the changes are for that half percent. In addition to that, one thing I'll, you know, as the note says, is the rate of return has increased, and that should say from 6.2 to 6.7. I apologize for the mistype there on the note on the right-hand side of this slide, but the chart is correct, where the current benchmark rate of return is 6.7%. So we kind of take these results, and then we inject them into our continued ongoing long-range cash flow analysis, and we'll do so on the next slide. But before I move on, any questions on kind of the PSC math that you'd like me to go into? But before I move on, any questions on kind of the PSC math that you'd like me to go into?
I don't see any, Brian.
Not kidding, any. That's great. So in the long-range cash flow, which is the slide labeled Water Future Projection Initial PSC App slide, this is, you know, something.
Uh-oh.
Oh.
Did he kiss it?
Yeah. Will he stop talking? Play his computer.
He's probably still talking.
He probably is. Maybe froze.
Oh, no. We lost him. Joe. We love technology, right?
You're back.
Wonder if he's still talking.
Yeah.
I suppose.
So right after this, they just let us out.
Right after the slide.
Hello?
Brian, we lost you.
Yeah.
So.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. And we're at the water slide, Future Projection Initial PSC App.
Okay, great. Did you get any of what I talked through there or no? On that slide?
Nothing.
Okay, I greatly apologize. So there, all we're doing is putting in the results of the application in that 51.42% to identify where does that put the utility, right on a long-range cash flow basis? So we're just updating this from what you saw back in September with the 58.4, or excuse me, 50.8, excuse me. So really not much change here. The one thing that I just point to everybody visually is identifying that our net before debt, which is the row about halfway down, is kind of the numerator of a very important financial indicator, weighing that against your debt service, which builds your all-in debt coverage, which is kind of shown at the bottom, which says for every dollar of debt service, how much dollars are we creating available for debt service? That number should always be about a dollar and 40 cents or 1.4. And so we've kind of built the cash flow to test is this revenue adjustment enough? That answer is yes. You can kind of see that with 2027 at 1.49. And then beyond that, our goal is to kind of identify any sort of future revenue percent adjustments to maintain that average at about 1.4. So when you see the future adjustments, that's kind of right now, the plan, all other things being equal, based off of the goal of trying to maintain all-in debt coverage. So it's all to say, we would recommend the adjustment that the PSC application kind of results in, so that it creates kind of financial stability within the utility. On the next page, we're looking at the water impact on average residential bill. And on that slide, there's kind of a chart to show based off of the projected change from the rate application. And again, please be reminded from what we presented that this time, you know, the last time we went into the PSC is they do go through their own cost service analysis, which won't be a flat-line percent to these volume and fixed charges. So they will kind of allocate this slightly differently. It generally results in something within like a 95 to 105 interval of this result. But just not knowing that until the PSC decides it, we just kind of show it as a flat line. But the 51.42% adjustment would yield about a $12 change to a monthly bill for someone using 3,000 gallons per month. So. Beyond that, the next slide looks at a rate comparison of where the Oregon Water Utility Rates sit in Dane County versus where they may sit at the time, you know, PSC approves this, which remember does take time and the PSC, you know, will make some slight changes. But that said, assuming the 51.42% adjustment, you go about smack dab in the middle in terms of where you sit with the rest of the utilities in the county. A few things of note there is we work for a few of these other utilities. And note that they are also going through the same process, so they will be adjusting. The other point would be while we like to understand where all our neighbors sit with rates, I think the important thing is to understand not all utilities are created equal, right? You may have different pumping expenses due to topography, different treatment expenses due to what's in your water sourcing. And just understand the needs of your utility are kind of identified through the capital improvement program and operating budgets. And you have your own makeup of your system that kind of yields necessary results. But that said, if I'm, you know, running the utility and thinking about the regulated environment in which we sit and how the PSC does their math equation, I would want to be in the middle because these one-time adjustments, depending on the magnitude of a project, can all of a sudden be very large. So that said, you just did a rate case a few, you know, two years ago, and now already it's, you know, 51%. So the point being is usually when you start seeing yourself at the bottom of this list, we're not clinking champagne glasses because that usually means there's a larger magnitude adjustment coming. And as best we can, knowing we can't control the PSC, but at least we can understand how they operate and try to mitigate the one-time adjustment as much as possible. And then the last slide, which is the what's next? With the green light to kind of file the application, we just wanted to provide a timeline to understand that it's not an immediate rate adjustment. The full rate case process generally takes five to six months. And so there would be a public hearing down the road. Once the PSC is ready to schedule that, they will schedule it and then ask for a customer notice that they produce to go out. Given the time that we're filing, we're kind of projecting right now, it should be early 2026 for implementation. But again, this is on the PSC's timeline. And the other important point is once you file, it really is in the Public Service Commission's hands. They will control the timeline from here on out. And there's really no other board action required. They kind of take it as if you're applying, right? You wanting this rate adjustment to happen and the PSC will then put their regulatory stamp on the final result. That said, you know, if there are any things that are kind of wildly outside of expectation, we are engaged to kind of be there along the way to help staff navigate the PSC questions and process. But we will put a pause on the rate case if there is something that needs attention. So we could certainly stop that process if necessary. If there's something that we find the PSC is doing that is not advantageous to your customers. So but beyond that, one last thing that I'll mention is, and I mentioned this a couple of years ago when you filed, since that PSC notice, the customer notice is not required until the public hearing is published, that can be a while down the road. We would recommend kind of customer communications that we will send to staff once this is filed and accepted by the PSC, so likely within like a week or two. And I would certainly recommend just kind of discussing how you want customer communication to happen before the public hearing, because you could understand from a rate payer's perspective to see the customer notice at the 11th hour that statutorily required. And then also the statutory language defines when you filed, you know, it just says, hey, we filed five months ago. And the customer, of course, would have appreciated a little more heads up. So we will provide staff some recommended customer language that is not statutorily required, that you can choose to disseminate on your own. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions? It's like you're helpful, Brian. Okay. Questions? Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Amanda, second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Have a good night.
Could I just say, Lauren, that was a really helpful memo that you wrote too, explaining the need for this. I found that very useful.
Thanks.
Okay, item five, approval of vouchers in the amount of $1,723,598.54. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. You have Tom and Paige. Questions? Comments?
I just want to make a quick comment. Because when you see a voucher's number this high, sometimes it makes you a little, I don't know, ask questions. A good portion of this, from what I can tell, is on page 92, which is the wastewater treatment plant. PH, I don't know what PH is standing for, one. Phase one?
Phase one.
I got there. I got there. Which we are financing through the Clean Water Fund.
Words. Thank you. The Clean Water Fund. And so just for those who are watching or taking a look at our agendas, you know, we approve all things that are coming through financially. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's just a check that we're writing. It's coming through in different financial ways. So just wanted to give that little heads up if someone's taking a look at this, that there's lots of little things, but then there's also a couple of really big things as well.
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, I would follow with that a lot of this is capital projects, the Oak Street project, as well as another, representing another third of that total. So a lot of capital expenditures this period.
Anybody else? Okay, so roll call vote, please.
Knipfer? Yes. Van Kampen?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes. Kurt Stroffer?
Yes.
And McDaniel?
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda, staff recommendation, motion to approve the agenda items as presented, 6A through 6C. I will make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Lynn, was that Lynn? Okay, questions on these items? Hearing none. All those, motion by me, by the chair, second by Lynn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven. Reports of committees, interest for discussion and/or possible action. A1 Planning Commission Ordinance Number 25-06. An ordinance demanding chapter 22 of the Village of Oregon Code of Ordinance relating to stormwater management and erosion control. Commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Amanda? And Tom? And Elise?
Really a lot of cleanup items for the language, trying to make sure that the language here aligns with some of our county and state standards for stormwater and kind of current engineering practices. There's not a lot of content changes here, but mostly cleaning up language. And we did discuss as a planning commission at length, I think, just cleared up some some questions about wording. But ultimately, I think we we recommend moving it forward. I think it was maybe six to one vote there.
Questions? Anyone? Okay, motion by Amanda, second by Tom. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Elise. Item eight, unfinished business, interest for discussion and/or possible action. A. Change order number one for 2025 wastewater upgrades contract with Stop Construction Corporation for net cost of $75,883 related to minor work scope changes and replacement of valves for the sludge storage tank. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Paige? And Amanda? And I bet you this is Lauren.
That is correct. Town and Country was going to be here tonight. There was a scheduling conflict. So I will kind of just briefly go over what this means as far as a framework, and then specifically what the large component of this change order is. I don't want to dwell on it too much. I did kind of summarize it in the memo. But essentially, for a project this big and this technical, the way that Town and Country and contractors prefer to do things is we do have an onsite construction engineer that she is there full-time. That's her entire job during this construction period. And when minor issues come up, they're brought to her. She and the Town and Country team kind of evaluate those issues, work with the contractor. And if they're just little things that are plus or minus about $5,000, they will kind of, they'll bring them, of course, all of them to us at staff level. But we won't bring every single one of those immediately to the board. What they do is they'll document them and then we'll kind of put them in one big change order. Realistically, this is often how it works in practice for a project such as a street project. Quantities change in the field and the field engineer is out there doing it. And this is kind of a more specific and better documented version of that practice. So that's kind of what you'll see going forward as we continue with this project over the next two or so years. We'll continue to bring these as they hit $25,000 or so and just kind of summarize what those changes were. So the first three items in this change order were those small changes. And I believe they actually net out to a deduct to the village. The major chunk of this change order is the replacement of six valves at the sludge tank. And this came about because Callie Anderson, our wastewater utility manager, noted to the onsite engineer that they, they being the operators out there, physically cannot turn four of these valves anymore. And because we had a contractor out here, these valves were already scheduled and programmed in for Phase Two of the wastewater treatment plant improvements. But they were getting to the point that they were failing earlier than expected. And because we did have a very competent contractor out here, Callie and his team asked, can we get a cost for these? And they did approach it two ways, getting a cost just for four of the six, the four that really stick, and then adding in those two. And they presented it kind of to the whole team. And we all kind of agreed that if we replace all six now, that'll really cut down on work that a contractor in Phase Two has to do. They won't have to go back and dig literally right next to the valves that they just replaced. And we won't have five years of inflation added on for that same work. So our recommendation is to move forward with this, get these out of the way. And then these will be taken out of that Phase Two project entirely, and we can leave this area alone.
Okay. Questions? Tom?
Just a question regarding to the funding on it. Was this within the scope of the borrowing that we did this year or is there funds available? Or I realize we're not going to borrow that money in the future, but how are we paying for that now?
That is an excellent question. Given the scope of this project, it's kind of the expectation that probably this will be within the scope of that borrowing. There's so much yet to go on that project that things will adjust. That said, we do have what's called an equipment replacement fund that we keep per law that is used to replace anything that fails at the wastewater treatment plant. So we do have that option available to us if we need to use it. That's a pretty hefty fund that we can tap into.
Okay. And then when we do the CIP, then we'll be reducing that into the future projection for that amount, probably?
That's correct. That's correct, yep.
Other questions? Okay. We have a motion by Paige, second by Amanda, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Lauren.
Switch to him.
I'm sorry?
Sorry.
Oh. Item nine, new, new business items for discussion and/or possible action, A. Draft twenty-twenty-six and through twenty-thirty-five, Village of Oregon capital improvement plan.
All right. So, I'm going to talk for a little bit, not going to try to go too long-winded, there's, I know there's a lot of stuff in the packet, and this will be the first meeting for, five meetings, that will talk about the CIP. And so, what I'm going to do, my plan here is just to kind of roll through all the materials that are, are in the packet and explain the different pieces of them. And at the end of it, we'll talk sort of next steps and where the village board wants to go with some of the things we talked about. So, the CIP process, we do this every year. I think I bring up this little infographic here in my memo on every little component that we do of our financial management process. So, we're in that part of the year where we're updating the CIP, updating the financial management plan, as, as Brian talked about in the, the water rate study. And so, where we end up is, you know, the, the CIP draft gets presented here in July, and then we have about four, five, or six meetings where we talk about that, and then we look to get that approved by the board in September, and that rolls us right into our, our annual budget preparation in September, October, and then approval in November. And then we're collecting taxes at the end of the year there, and then we roll right into what we just did a couple of months ago with our debt plan for what we decided to do in the CIP, and then it starts all over again. So, so in the packet, I have a bunch of different pieces of information, so I have a memo about just what the CIP is, what a capital improvement plan is. Talks about debt management, talks about our policies, so just providing a little bit of foundation for anybody who wants to familiarize or re-familiarize themselves with this. I also have a memo in there about what we covered in our budget direction resolution from last month. And so, that spoke to having myself do a little bit more of an in-depth analysis of the CIP submissions and offering a little bit more strategic review and advice on some of the things that are, are in there. So, I'll cover that as well, and then there is, I guess, what I've dubbed CIP one-point-oh, which is the full schedule of projects as they were submitted by departments without any changes. There's also a preliminary financial impact analysis of the CIP one-point-oh. And then there's a CIP two-point-oh, which incorporates some of the things I'll talk about, some of the changes and strategies that I'm going to advise on. So, there's a duplicate there of full schedule again, plus the financial analysis of that. And then there are some worksheets showing some of the differences between the two, and then making up the bulk of, of the pages here is each individual CIP project worksheet, which gives a little bit more background on all the projects. So, as I said, there's a few pages in here related to just a primer on what is a capital improvement plan, I'm not going to cover any of that, but just talks about some of the benefits, some of the questions or misconceptions, a lot of times when we talk about the CIP, what our policies are, and then, of course, talking about debt and how we manage that, and our policies for that as well. So, I guess I'll, I'll stop there quick, is there anything there before I get into, I guess, my analysis on the CIP as it was submitted, anything you want me to talk about or answer on CIP or debt generally?
No.
All right.
Go ahead.
All right, so then, I have a memo here on just my own review of the CIP as it was submitted. So, one of the things I always highlight and talk about, I think, every year is, so when we put the CIP together, we do it pretty conservatively, we make some very, very conservative assumptions, because the thought being is that we want to be on the other side of that assumption rather than the bad side of that, and trying to assume things not conservatively. So, what that typically looks like is when we do our analyses of these, our assumptions are very conservative, so when we talk about property values, we assume two percent growth in those property values, which is very conservative for what Oregon has been doing the last few years. We've been ten percent increase to our value, fifteen percent increase to our value one year, eight percent, nine percent. So, when we talk about impact on property tax rate due to CIP and, and to the debt, a lot of times it ends up being, looking a lot better than it does in these assumptions, because when you have more value, you can spread across your taxes, spread your taxes across that value than, than what we would assume initially, so. And typically, what happens every year is those new values come out in mid-August. And so, when I, when we bring the, the first sort of draft of the CIPs in July, sometimes they look a little grisly. And then when we get to August, we get the actual numbers and they end up being a lot higher, at least in recent history. And so, then all of a sudden, the CIP looks a little bit better, because we have a lot more value that we can spread those property taxes across. So, that may happen again this year, but it's not something we can definitely count on every single year, and so we assume conservatively. And so, if you've been on the board here for the last few years, you know, you know, how this has sort of played out from this process today to when we go and take debt in April. This last year in twenty-twenty-five in April, you know, when we were sitting here talking last fall, last summer about CIP, we were thinking we were going to need to borrow six million in April, we ended up borrowing four-point-six million in this past April, and in twenty-twenty-four, it was eight-point-five, we thought, and then it ended up being six-point-five. So, we also assume all of the projects when we're going to fund them, we try to assume mostly that we're going to use debt, but what ends up happening is we have other sources of funding that we feel comfortable using, whether it's cash on hand or some grants maybe turn up, or maybe we've sold some other assets or property that we can use some cash from. So, when we get into the fine detail of, of taking out debt in April, we can feel a bit more comfortable about using those sources. So, I pulled up, we were doing the financial management plan in, in twenty-twenty-one. The projection that, of that FMP back then, thought that in twenty-twenty-five, we'd be at sixty percent of our statutory debt limit, when we are now currently at forty-three percent here in twenty-twenty-five. So, you can see how those conservative assumptions sort of play out in a good way, but it's always good to start from a conservative standpoint, because a lot of things can happen. So, as it stands, I guess, with the CIP one-point-oh, so this is, as the CIP was submitted by department heads, and so not very, not changed by me at all, not modified in any way. The ten-year plan has projects totaling a hundred and seventy-five million dollars over ten years. And most of that is being programmed, refunded, as I mentioned, by debt, again, trying to assume conservatively. On the property tax side, that's about ninety-six million dollars in debt over those ten years. And then on this, the, the utility, the utility side, which is supported by rates and not property taxes, as we just covered in, in the item before. We can see the, the lineup of about twenty-seven million from revenue bonds, twenty million from clean water fund loans, and then sewer revenue bonds, fifteen million on, on the sewer side as well. And then we assume some grants or some contributions, a lot of these are from, from Dane County on some of our street projects, some cash that we feel comfortable saying that we can use, and then impact fees as well. And so, looking at the plan, there's really five, five really big buckets of things that we're talking about when we're talking about what's, what's in the projects, or what, what is made up of projects in the plan. The biggest area is our streets, so over the ten years, that's actually the biggest amount of spend, just over forty million, so that's talking about some reconstruction projects of our neighborhood streets. We also have some of those big corridors that we've talked about on Wolf Street and Jefferson Street, which the board has talked about over the last few months. One thing I do want to note here, just on a very specific project, because we haven't talked about this in a, in a board meeting yet, but we are currently in design for the Wolf Street Phase One project, and we even had a public informational meeting a few weeks ago. We've heard from the county that they want to push that project to twenty-twenty-seven construction rather than twenty-six construction, and the reason for that is they feel like they want some more time to work through some of the design considerations, and on top of that, some of the costing for those designs considerations, they'd feel more comfortable doing the project one year out, so I just wanted to make a note of that, because that was in our CIP for next year. The next biggest item of spend over the ten years is parks. We have twenty-point-four million for parks, so there's a few major redevelopments of, of some of our parks in there, but also just cyclical replacements of some of our playgrounds and other maintenance equipment throughout our existing parks and operations. Then we have our, our two big facility projects after that that are in the plan, of course, the senior center facility we've talked about at length. It's a fifteen-point-nine million dollar borrow that we have for the senior center, scheduled across two years, with most of it, at least initially here in this, the first version being next year, so the project will be ready for construction by the end of this year. And then the second big project, facility project is the fire station. And so, in the Fire EMS district, CIP has twelve-point-six million, most of that is that eight million dollar contribution, which would be the village's proportion of the project, that's currently scheduled for twenty-seven in the district CIP. And then the other big, last big bucket here is just ongoing replacement of our, our assets. So, this is placement of vehicles and different kinds of equipment we use for daily operations, whether it's police squad cars, public works vehicles, dump trucks, snow plows, that sort of thing, but also equipment. There's police equipment, public works equipment, parks equipment, information technology, our computer replacements, that sort of thing. So, when we look at our CIP, what we do is we combine it all together, consolidate all the different department submissions together, and then we ship it off to Brian at Ellers, and he does a, a very quick kind of financial impact analysis that we have in there, and it really looks at two things that we're, we're trying to find right now. One is, we have a debt limit policy in place, and I'll talk about that in just a second, so we want to make sure that we're following that policy and we're not exceeding that policy. But then we also want to look at what is the impact on property taxpayers? So, if we do this plan, what is the, you know, typical household, typical, typical single-family household going to be impacted by as far as the taxes that will be needed to cover it? And so, with the first version of the CIP, we, we did that analysis, and two sort of big challenges sort of surfaced right away. So, one is the debt policy that we have, which is seventy-five percent of our statutory capacity, so by state law, we are limited to the amount of debt that we can hold by five percent of our equalized value of our entire village. And the village has put in a self-imposed limitation of that policy to seventy-five percent of that capacity. So, we don't want to borrow all the way up to our lawful limit, because we want to leave some capacity in case of things like emergencies, you know, whether there's, it's a catastrophe, is like a tornado comes through or something like that, and we need a lot of cash to maybe prop up a, some of our own facilities, or to respond to that disaster in different ways. But also, it speaks to our financial management, so when we go out for debt and we get a bond rating, and that's what they look at, those credit rating agencies look at, to make sure that we are managing our debt appropriately, and this sort of policy helps speak to that. So, the CIP as submitted, we would be exceeding that, so it would be exceeded for actually nine years, between twenty-twenty-eight and twenty-thirty-seven, we would actually get up to about nearly eighty-five percent of our debt limit. And our total general obligation debt, which is the debt that's covered by property taxes, would double from today from about forty-two million to ninety-four-point-seven million about seven years from now. So, this looks like what we have in these two documents here, and I'll start with the debt capacity analysis. So, and, and this is page two-oh-two of Packet, so, and it's indicated by this CIP one-point-oh in red in the corner. So, on the left side over here, you can see sort of what exists. So, you can see our equalized value, and again, it's conservatively estimated, you can see our statutory debt limit. So, that's how much we are legally allowed to borrow. Our seventy-five percent, so that's our self-imposed policy limit, and then our existing debt that we have right now, and that's that forty-two million, and that's sitting at about forty-four percent, forty-three percent of our total statutory debt limit. And you can see as we go throughout the years, we start to pay that off and, and it starts to decrease. But when we add in our capital improvement plan and the proposed debt to fund that, you can see with each passing year, we're taking out additional debt to cover our capital improvements. So, at the far-right side, you can see, so we're starting with that forty-two million in twenty-six or twenty-five, and you can see how it starts to grow as we start to fund those capital improvements in the plan. And then you can see twenty-twenty-eight is the first year that we would sort of breach our policy limit, and then that would continue on for, again, those nine years through twenty-thirty-six. And then on the previous page, on two-oh-one, you can see that other factor that we like to look at, which is the effect on property taxes. And so, again, on the left side, you can see the existing debt that we already have. So, in twenty-twenty-six, we expect to levy about four million dollars to cover our debt payments, and we already know that, we took out debt this year already. So, there's no surprise there. We look at our equalized value, we can calculate and estimate the property tax rate for just that portion of our property taxes, and we expect that a home of about four-hundred-and-twenty thousand, which was the median value home in Oregon in twenty-twenty-four, will pay about, of their property taxes, nine-hundred-and-five of those dollars will be to cover the village's debt payments. So, on the right-hand side, we have the proposed debt, so this is taking into account our, our capital improvement plan and the debt that would be needed. And you can see with each passing year, that home gets a little bit more taxed. So, in twenty-twenty-seven, we would expect thirty-five dollars added on to it, in twenty-eight, another a hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, twenty-nine, another a hundred-and-forty-three, and so that peaks at about seventeen-hundred, in twenty-thirty-five, seventeen-hundred-and-thirty-one. So, almost doubling over the next ten years before we start to kind of come on the backside of, of the CIP on that, in the debt there. So, I'll go back here. So, the, I guess, the, the point of these two things is, is number one, the, the debt capacity issue, it's more of an administrative, technical sort of piece of this, where we really, you know, my advice and my recommendation, in, in all cases, would, would never to be, to approve a CIP that exceeds our debt policy. So, now you're certainly welcome to, to go beyond that if you feel that is necessary, but you'll never get a recommendation from me to say that, that's okay. On the, but on the, the property tax side and how it impacts property taxpayers, that's a little bit more your judgment call, right? What is, what are people willing to accept, and that is what you're elected to do and to, to figure out. And so, you know, we certainly can give you advice on that, but at the end of the day, it comes down to a, a little bit more of a political question. So, taking this, and I'm going to, I'm going to pass by the utilities right now, but I'm going to stay on the, the general fund side and in the property tax side. So, getting this and, and going through my review of this, this next piece of it, starting on page one-eighty-nine of the packet, sort of talks, speaks to a little bit of how I approached it and sort of my logic of how we can start to address both of these two issues. And that, that's really what this comes down to, and, and my mind is, we need to make sure we get under our debt limit, and for taxes, my thought process here is And for taxes, my thought process here is, you know, we had the referendum in April, we had the decision from residents on that. You know, we can take that and interpret that in any sort of way. But to me, it speaks to, people are sensitive to affordability concerns right now. And so we need to think about what we are shooting for in terms of how our debt and our CIP is going to affect property tax rates specifically. And so my thought addressing these two issues was sort of twofold. And so number one, we want to get under the 75%. So, you know, where can we eliminate or move projects around? And hopefully doing so without overly kicking the can down the road on some critical projects. So that one's pretty straightforward. But in terms of the actual property tax impacts, my thought here, and again, this is totally subjective, is to figure out a way to keep our property taxes flat in the near term, especially through the next two or three years, so that we can demonstrate responsiveness to what we heard in the referendum. And so if we can keep that flat, and if we decide, or the future boards decide that they want to return to a referendum or an operational referendum in the future, especially 2028 was one of the targets that was possibly mentioned, we can be in an environment where we can speak to, we have held taxes flat, we heard what we heard in the 2025 referendum, things got restrained and constrained. And you can look at this chart and you can see your taxes were, you know, effectively the same or very minimal compared to where they were. So we can kind of take that part of the equation off of the challenges of going to referendum and be able to speak to that. So that was my thought process there. Again, you may think differently, and there's some trade-offs with that approach as well, and I can talk about those. But that's sort of where my mind went on these two issues. So looking at the CIP and then how to move projects around and how to think of projects to try to address these challenges, you know, the first thing to think about in terms of where to focus is, you know, you're not going to solve, you know, tens of millions of dollars talking about $10,000 in computer upgrades or $50,000 in snow plows or squad cars. And so you really, and again, my advice here for board is you really need to focus on these big buckets of items, because that's what's going to make the difference to, you know, at the very least, getting this 75% debt limit piece under control. And in fact, the four, you know, big buckets, not, not the ongoing asset replacement bucket, but the other four, the streets, parks, senior centers, and fire EMS, that's 93% of the proposed tax-supported debt in the CIP. So that's really where we need to spend our time and energy. And so for looking at this for myself and trying to kind of put together a strategy and trying to get to move the needle on these two indicators, I looked at each one of these buckets. So starting with the senior center, you know, so number one, you know, I won't go through everything in here, but number one, there's a identified need, right? We know that this project is important. We've been through this process for, at least in depth here, for the last three or four years, doing the analyses, doing the, we actually have the design team on now. We're, we've borrowed money for this project now, you know, nearly $2 million already. There really isn't any good answer for how to move this project around in a way that would be more desirable than where it currently is. The only thing that I can think of in terms of, especially speaking to trying to keep the tax, taxes flat over the next couple of years, is dividing up the cost of the borrowing that we're going to do differently than how it was in the original CIP. And so what I have proposed here and was reflected in the CIP 2.0 is pushing the project to be, to start later in the year, next year, so that we don't have to borrow for the bulk of the project in 2026. We sort of can split the project almost in two between '26 and '27, 2027. And so what that really in effect does is, really only speaks to that keeping the taxes flat, right? So if that's not important to this board, we can, we can change the arrangement for how we want to do the senior center project. We can move it more to 2026 again and try to do most of the project in that year. So, so that's really what that, that recommendation is really all about. The second part is the fire station. So of course, we have this other big facility project that is right now programmed in the district CIP for 2027. And so right now, that project is, the commission is working on their space needs analysis and looking at that project and knowing what we've had to go through, through some of our facility projects over the last couple of years. In my opinion, I don't think it's realistic for us to, to think that we're going to be building a project in 2027 for the fire station. And I think more realistically, when you're looking at all the steps that need to, need to happen, we're looking at maybe at the earliest, I think even if we really wanted to do the project and everybody in the district, all the member municipalities were fully committed and we had a location picked out and we knew where we wanted to go and we knew how we wanted to do it, I think at the earliest, you could maybe hit 2029. But I think more realistically, we're looking at 2030 and maybe even a year or two or three beyond that. Just when we look at all the different elements and all the pieces that go into this, you can look at the senior center project, we did the space needs in 2023, and we're looking at building the project in 2026. And we really have progressed in that project without any major hiccups, right? And we fully control the project. We own the property, we fully own all pieces of it, and it's still taken us three years since the space needs analysis to get to the point of, of construction. So, you know, we're going to have the joint meeting next week with all the other municipalities, and this may be a point of conversation. But I think from the village's perspective, not only is it probably realistic to expect it to be a few more, few more years out, but from the village's financial standpoint and speaking to property tax impacts, you know, this is really the more desirable place for this project to be. And then the last piece of this is the streets and parks projects. And I have some worksheets in there that sort of show what we've kind of worked on adjusting, Lauren and I worked on, moving some projects around to try to speak to these two issues. And so you can sort of see, you'll have to refer back to what's in the CIP 1.0 schedule, but you can sort of see in red what, where we've moved things. And you can see sort of, we've moved, moved some projects back, moved some projects around within the middle part. You can see we're trying to kind of clear space for the two facility projects, right? We're going to have the senior center in these first two years, we're going to have probably a fire station in these two years. And so we're really trying to move some things into the intervening years, but then also move some things out beyond those years. And you can see that too with the parks projects too. We moved some things around, combined some things, got rid of some things. But really, it's really tried to work around these two huge facility projects that we're going to have, and then also speak to the debt limit and then the property tax impacts as well. All right. So what does that do for 2.0? So 2.0 is in there. Again, I got it marked off in red, so you can see the differences in the upper right corner when you're looking at the different sets of documents. But what happens is, in this scenario, is it gets us to achieving a flat tax rate, but it does not achieve getting below the 75% debt limit. So what happens is we end up having a higher peak debt limit towards the later part of the CIP. So we're just sort of pushing projects out a little bit, trying to clear space in the earlier years. And so that helps us kind of keep that tax rate flat. And on the back end of it, we end up having to take out more debt, and then it ends up peaking our debt at a little bit higher, although for a little bit less years. It ends up peaking at about 86% of the limit in 2035, and it breaches the limit for seven years as opposed to nine years. So it's a little bit of a higher peak in a quick, rapid succession of increased debt. But the peak amount of debt would be about $1,935 impact on a, an average, median value home, which is a little bit higher than what was in the CIP 1.0. So you can see that in the two analysis here, just like in the first one. You can see that 2031, we get past that 75%. And then we get out of that in 2038. And then on the property tax impact side, so now you can see where those early years, we've effectively sort of kept these taxes flat. You know, this is, this is a low enough amount where we can kind of play with that. And then things start to hit again in 2030 where it starts to ramp up. And like I said before, the peak starts to rapidly go up and kind of sustain itself a little bit higher as opposed to the first version of the CIP. So that's as far as, as we've gotten in the first four weeks, since we've gotten all the submittals back from department heads. So as I have it in here, you know, in terms of what it's going to take to make this work if we're trying to go for those two things that I discussed, which is the 75% limit and then trying to hold taxes flat in these next couple of years, we're going to have to defer some more major projects. We may need to think about reducing some project scopes and just eliminating other projects entirely. So I guess for tonight's meeting, really, you know, if there's any feedback or questions or additional information or any direction that you want to give, that'd be great. Obviously, this is the first of a few meetings here, so nobody's asking you to make any decisions tonight. And we're going to keep working on this over the next couple, couple of weeks to try to get us to meeting those two strategies that I outlined. So I guess the, you know, to me, you know, advising the board, you know, again, I suggest, you know, focus on the big picture. It's very easy to get caught up in things that we sort of understand, you know, buying cars and things like that. But there's some very large multimillion dollar things that are really driving this CIP, and that's where, you know, my suggestion would be to focus the discussion on. The other thing would be is, you know, these major scenarios that I've sort of gamed out in terms of deferring the fire station, adjusting the senior center funding, rescheduling some streets and parks work. A lot of that is contingent upon, you know, those strategies that I outlined. Probably the big one that is a little bit more subjective is, you know, is it important to keep taxes flat here in the next couple of years? If it's not as important, you know, that can change the dynamic here. We could maybe stair-step things a little bit more in terms of how property taxes are affected over the years. But then also think in terms of trade-offs. So if there's something that the board feels really passionate about, especially in the parks and street side of things, you know, you want something done within the next couple of years as opposed to later in the schedule, you have to think about what those trade-offs are. So if we're going to do more stuff upfront, that's going to raise that property tax impact in the initial years. You know, it might help balance a little bit out on the debt service impacting the 75%. But there's going to have to be some sort of trade-off. And at the end of it, you know, talking with Brian from Ellers, his sort of look at this is that we need to find about $13 million to get out of the CIP in order to not breach our 75% policy limit. So, you know, that's kind of where I'm at right now, which is trying to figure out those, that next $13 million of deferrals or cuts out of the CIP. But again, we could probably front-load some of that a little bit more, and it would have an impact on the taxes. But at the end of the day, we also have to meet that 75% limit. And so that just means simply the need to get rid of projects from the plan in order to do that. That's all I got for now.
Okay. Questions for Martin? Lynn and Tom?
Thank you, Martin, for this. I appreciate the amount of work that goes into this from everybody. It's really not seen how much this takes, so I genuinely appreciate it. I have a couple of questions about our big projects. First of all, I guess I'll say, I appreciate getting to take a look at this now. I'll be interested to see next time around, because of the district meeting coming up, the park board didn't meet this month, and I think their discussion about the parks changes will be useful for the village board to hear. We don't have that advice or conversation quite yet. But in terms of the senior center amount, are we expecting that amount of debt for that project with no additional funding coming in? I know that in the timelines we've seen for the senior center, there's a small fundraising portion, and I, I don't expect that we're going to uncover millions and millions of dollars in a fundraising, although if you're interested. I guess I'm wondering, are we assuming taking on 100% of that cost with this number?
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And are we, do we have any plans to look at any other sources of funding other than just fundraising grants and?
Yep, yeah, so there's, and this might get, I might pull on this for the, the next version of the CIP. But, so there is, most likely, there will be some cash that we'll have available to put towards the project. I would say maybe up to a half a million, just based on what we've already borrowed, based on kind of how the budget, project budget is kind of shaking out. I would expect there'd be some funds left that we can use now towards construction. The other piece is assuming some amount of fundraising. We know that we have already around about $200,000 in fundraised from just prior years of accumulated donations that have been made in past years. So we could assume a little bit of that, plus maybe some additional through the fundraising effort. But the other thing to think about too is, you know, we're also assuming the cost. And so it might work the opposite way too, where the final, you know, construction budget ends up being a little bit more than we thought it might be. And so there's a little bit of a balance of like, you know, we assume it all on debt right now, and maybe that isn't the case, but then maybe it does become the case through a different circuitous route, through different sources, but then increase construction costs. So this is probably a pretty good, you know, conservative estimate, but it could work either way.
Perfect, thank you.
Tom? I guess a couple different elements in this. Part of it is we are extremely conservative in this plan. And, you know, we've got an experience, we've got, we live in Dane County with a high housing demand. We've experienced large percentages of ghosts in our, our equivalent value year over year for quite a few years. 2% is extraordinarily conservative. And, and you could even, if you made it two and a half percent, it would have an enormous impact on your, your overall percentage because it would accumulate over years and you're, by year 2030, you're, you're kind of blowing it away. So I guess I'd caution on, we can be too conservative. And I, and I'm a little, little leaning on that a little bit. I get concerned when we start pushing off projects. And I think an example of pushing off projects and then paying a higher cost later on is the senior center where we pushed that off, and now we're paying more for maintaining air conditioning systems and heating systems and so forth and so on. You have the same problem, I guess, in other analogy would be the car scenario. You, you can run a car and like, well, it's pretty, still running, so I'm going to run it another year. And that year, you wind up with replacing more and more pieces of it. And we're going to run into that on streets and all the other projects. We have to be, you can be conservative in your borrowing and your debt plan, but you also have to take into reality what, sometimes you have to replace some stuff just to save money. So there's, there's an offset in that, and I, I'm just cautioning that in my, in my perspectives on it. I'm really reluctant to I'm really reluctant to push the senior center much, just because it's been, it's 25, 30 years we've been going through this project and we are paying a higher operational costs now because of that. So we can do that on other projects too, so we have to be cautious on that. So a little reluctant to push a lot of stuff. We can push it a little bit, but pushing it too much, you're going to pay for it eventually anyhow. So that's just perspectives of my part. Okay. Amanda?
Yeah, so thank you for all this work that you've done, Martin. It's very helpful to see it all laid out and to have your suggestions. I like the idea of pushing out the, the fire department, you know, new buildings. I feel like, just based on talking with the other communities involved, that they aren't quite ready to make those expenditures and make that a reality in 2027 seems kind of wishful thinking. So pushing that project back makes more sense to me than like the senior center, although a conservative year pushback isn't, I, I can't say it's off the table. I think everything you've mentioned is, is, is going to be things we have to consider. The only other thing I'll say is I really would like us to stay closer to the 50% level of our debt capacity than the 75% self-imposed level because that scares me. That is a slippery slope that we do not want to go down because it tends to grow and grow and grow. You're paying more interest, it's, it's problematic. And so in past budgeting, we have tried, we have gone above the 50%, but it's been for very short periods. And I, I, I like that policy. I love that we're at 43% this, this past year, which is amazing. That's below the 50%. We're always going to have debt. That is a fact of municipal life. It's never going to disappear. But the, keeping it in self-imposed limits that are as low as possible is, is really good. As far as the, your flat, keeping, trying to keep taxes flat, I'm a little torn about that and I'm curious what other people think. I feel like, yes, keeping taxes flat would be great. It would show constituents that we're, we hear them, people are struggling. My concern is that if the school district and the county and everybody else isn't keeping taxes flat, their taxes are still going to most likely go up and we will bear the brunt of it regardless because people don't make that distinction. Now, we could try and educate them and it, it might help. I think flat is going to be very difficult. I feel like we can keep them, the increases low, but I, I'm worried that if we keep it flat for a year, that the next time it goes up is going to be a bigger jump. And that scares me because then it's, what was the point, you know? Gradual, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm torn about this, I really am, because I'd be curious to hear what other people think. I am not afraid to, to cut some things that people really frankly depend on or like. I mean, if we have to push back road projects, if potholes and streets don't get fixed quite as quickly, people will notice that. And, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's just an example. I'm not, you know, I'm not saying let's do that. I'm saying, you know, if it may be playgrounds or equipment not being updated or whatever it is, but I think people will start to see the, the effects of this and hopefully contact their state legislators about it. Thank you. Okay.
Lynn? I just have one more thing, kind of going off of what you're saying, Amanda. I, I, I really love the idea of keeping things flat. That's an awesome goal. I think one of the things that I would be interested in seeing is what pieces of the CIP actually help us on the operational side of things? So that in some aspects, we would maybe increase things, but in order to sort of help decrease things in the areas in which we can't. So one of the things I think of, which this is probably very nominal, but lots of the park improvements were to put on the solid surfacing, which takes away having to do the weeds, do the wood chips, mow around some of those areas. Like, it's not much, but it's kind of a hand in hand situation where maybe we put the money in the CIP to reduce some of the stress onto the staff. You know, we talked about some of the things that we could do this year to sort of help in our operational stress to the staff. And I think if there are things in the CIP that can be identified as this is a true benefit, you know, we talked about that with the police department, with the UTV, like that helps them do their job more efficiently. I think that's where I would want to see some of those recommendations and maybe putting those up ahead of things so that we can take off the pressure of having to do that referendum 2028. I mean, it still might be out there, we'll never know, but at least we can help the staff in the meantime, if there's anything like that.
Okay. Tom?
I guess the, I didn't, when my prior comments, I didn't reference the annual increases and so forth, and I guess it's, flat is great. It would be wonderful. It seems a bit unrealistic. I don't, we live in an inflationary economy. We already know that our operational budget portion is flat based on state law. I, I don't, I don't know that flat is realistic. I wouldn't expect it to be realistic. I expect my costs and my expenses to go up on a regular basis. I would be comfortable with some increases in the, in the overall tax rate from a, from the borrowing perspective, but kept in, you know, proportion.
I think that the, the operative word for, in here was flatten, so I don't think we're really going to be shooting for, well, it'd be nice if we got to a flat tax if that's what we decided to do, but I think that's, that's the idea here. Did you have something to add?
I'll just add that as a new board member, I kind of came in here with ideas of what I thought I would care about. And I did not think I would care so much about the senior center and I, holding off on that project, just looking at the history and reading what I have and being a new board member, I plead, I just, I care so much about this more than I ever thought I would. So that's something that I personally, I, I just think holding off on that is a ridiculous consideration at this point.
Okay. Let's see if we can maybe give Martin and the staff a little clearer picture without anybody making any decisions. There's some discussion of flattening the tax. We're not 100% sold on that. More time to think about. Clearly, we don't want to get anywhere near our debt limit. I think we all, right? And then it's really, there's three.
That was, that was the, the proposed, our, our policy, 75%.
Yes, that's correct, the debt limit. I'm sorry, I didn't verbalize that. Then there's the big three, really, and, and that is, one is the senior center. Sounds like maybe we talk about a little delay, but probably not. Is that? Everybody?
We're on the fence about that one.
Well, Amanda's on the fence.
I'm not on the fence.
You're not on the fence.
Yeah, so how about leaning towards not delaying? How about that? But no, again, no decisions. And the next is the fire district. And, you know, when you look at $13 million and you, and then you look at our share of the fire district in the next five, six years, it's a big chunk of that. You know, I'd like to, I, I like to think that we should push to 30 and 31, maybe divide the debt between those two years. I think Martin laid out very clearly how difficult it, for us to even get, really start to do anything in three years. And I don't think the village is in a position financially to, to do before that period. And while I wasn't speaking for the board at a commission meeting, I did tell them that, you know, that was one of the things that we would be considering. So I think that it seems like there's general consensus to move that out, 30, 31. Am I covering what you need?
Yes, no, this is actually really great. This is helpful. Yeah, I think, you know, so the first seat version of the CIP, when we had most of the borrowing for the senior center for next year, so doing the project, you know, pretty much starting in the first half of next year for sure. We only had an impact to the home here of about $35 and the, the village has done a very good job and over the last, probably starting in mid part of last decade, 2015, around that time of knowing that these generational facility projects were on the horizon and, you know, credit to Lisa and my predecessor for recognizing to stair step debt every year. And so you never saw huge spikes in the village's property taxes because of all of these projects that have happened. It's been, you know, a hundred dollars more a year, a hundred and $50 more a year. And so we've gotten to a, a really interesting point where taking on 11 million plus dollars for the senior center project has a very small impact in that initial year because we've done such a good job of layering the debt in such a way to make it kind of stair step the way it is. So I, I think if there, if there's a desire to really make sure that that project stays on track, it doesn't really have a huge impact on taxes in that first year. And then maybe we're looking at in those intervening years between, you know, after the project's done, up into the fire station, trying to kind of clear out some space to try to keep it a little bit flatter in that, sort of the mid, short term. And then we're trying to fit in that fire station project in the early part of next decade. And then trying to arrange parks and street projects in a way that doesn't sort of explode that stair stepping and then also keeping below the 75%. So, yeah, I can do, you know, a version of this that keeps the senior center on track as is, and then trying to kind of keep things a little bit level, but then we still most likely need to pull, you know, somewhere around that 13 million mark out just to get under the debt capacity issue. Now, to Tom's point, mid-August, we're going to get that equalized value for 2025. So there'll be a new number plugged in right here. Signs pointing to that being probably 10% increase rather than a 2% increase. And so what that does on debt capacity on the percent side, things start to look a little bit more favorable. So I think for next time, we try to find those $13 million projects, rearrange things, you know, the senior center getting that priority, seeing where things sort of shake out that way. And then hopefully in mid-August, we get some good news and maybe we can flood a little bit more of that $13 million back into the CIP. And I guess we'll, we'll see, we'll go from there.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, the one, the one thing I'll say too about sort of the conservative assumptions is it, it tends to work out, right? And it's tended to work out in the last couple of years, but I will say from a growth perspective, if you look at our available and entitled subdivisions that we have right now, you could see a scenario in three, four years where we've, we've built out everything that we have entitled right now. And so growth might slow down, at least in the new side of things. Now, existing appreciation of values may still continue, but that's sort of redistributing around taxes to all the existing property owners. So the tax rate might look like it's going down, but people don't actually feel that on their tax bills. But we could be in a scenario, you know, three or four years from now where our growth might slow down because we don't have any new development ready to go. And so it's good to, you know, we could be comfortable maybe assuming, you know, up to 10% increases in our equalized value for the next three years, but I would get really skeptical of anything, you know, not really conservative after that. And the other thing too, I think with the fire station project, I would expect the cost of that to go up. You know, it's assuming a $12 million project, about eight and a half million would be the village's portion right now. So that's another thing that's sort of, without all the, the details and all the information of sort of the pre-development work, my, my gut's telling me that that's going to be a much more expensive project. And sort of with the, the whole financial flexibility of the village, it's not necessarily an issue when you're doing sort of streets and parks and sort of that kind of thing, but when you're taking on these huge globs of debt in one or two years, a lot of your flexibility evaporates in those two years and you don't really know exactly where you're going to be sitting. And so kind of working around those two projects is a little, little dicey in terms of trying to navigate how we line up projects. But yeah, I mean, we'll see where that equalized value comes in for 2025 and we'll try to arrange some of these things based on what we've heard tonight and we'll see where, how things turn out.
Go ahead. I was just going to say quickly that, and Lynn touched on this, that is, I think the park board could be informative to us and to Martin and staff as to, maybe we'd start to weigh out some of these priorities? Yeah, go ahead.
Kind of related to my question because I saw something in the CIP that made me go, hmm, I wonder if we need to do that, you know, in, in the time period we have shown or, or at all? I mean, I, I don't know, I was looking at the Bethel Greenacre Park project to put in a, what, a baseball field or soccer field or some kind of field there and then a shelter with bathrooms and all that. I mean, there's a shelter there right now. We have a porta potty, I think, or, and, you know, it's not great, but it's also sufficient, I guess. I mean, eventually I want something done in that space, but that might be something we could delay a little bit more. It's unfortunate. I know, I mean, that's my neighborhood park too, I, you know, but that might be one of the sacrifices that we could make. I don't know, just like, like looking through this, I think we have some room to, to adjust and move things. That's all.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Martin, do you have what you need?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks very much. Moving on. Item 10, reports of village officers, department heads and consultants, information only. No action by the village board to be taken. Reports are in the meeting packet. A is a village administrator report. B, library director and public works director report. Clean energy and clean vehicle incentive payments for library's solar and public works electric vehicle. I think that was in the packet, anything that?
Don't need to talk about it.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, all good? Tennessee, village engineering consultant report, June 25, monthly report on wastewater upgrades project. I think that was in the packet and Kristen's not here to speak to that.
Yep, not, not a ton to add. The only thing to mention, I suppose, is that unsurprisingly, de-watering in this area is a tricky endeavor. And so to account for and work around the fact that it has taken longer to de-water our new intake station, Staub has adjusted their schedule slightly, so they're kind of working on two different facilities simultaneously. They're continuing to de-water kind of that major excavation there on the west side of the site, but they've also been going after the UV treatment facility closer to the creek. So those have kind of, they've brought that second one up a little bit in the schedule and they're going on simultaneously, but they continue to track very well.
Okay. Questions? Oh, thank you, Martin. Let's see, financial structure report, billing permits, impact fees and connection fees collected for the month ending 20, June 2025. Questions for Lisa? Item 11, announcements in miscellaneous business. A, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events in miscellaneous business. Let's start with department heads. Anyone? Please.
I want to just take a minute to update, uh, the board on an incident that we had. I believe it was the eighth of July. We did get a call around nine o'clock in the evening from our fire department that one of the manholes on Oak Street that was under construction had started to back up. They got a report from one of the residents on Birch Court that they had water in the basement. And upon responding, found that several of the other residents on Birch Court had water as well. We brought our team out, two of our vector operators with our sewer collection system were out there, as well as myself and our assistant director. And while we were out there, we discovered that there was another, um, an unconnected hose from another manhole bypass that had discharged sewage onto the soccer field by Prairie View immediately adjacent to the construction site. Fortunately, our staff had walked that site and knew what they were looking at and immediately reconnected it. So it only discharged for about three hours from the end of that working day instead of going all the way overnight. So it was an interesting situation in that there were kind of two contractor associated accidental overflows in one event and one alerted us to the second. So, um, the contractor did come up. They noted it when they got an alarm. So they did come up from Illinois and were out there with us and, um, touched base with all of the residents whose properties had been affected. The next day, they did get a, a couple of cleaning companies out there to start the cleanup process. They were, um, they were great to work with. They immediately took responsibility for it. I did speak with the DNR and filed all of the necessary paperwork on all of this and they have kind of processed it and, um, gotten back to us that, you know, what we're working on is what they would suggest. The area that was discharged onto at the school was cordoned off and it was treated with, uh, lime per the recommendation of the DNR. Uh, school district, of course, we touched base with them that next morning there. Things are looking generally pretty good. So that cordon will come down and, uh, that'll be kind of returned to, it'll be cleaned up. Anything remaining will be raked up, but returned to the school district in good, um, good working order. So just wanted to, if you do get those questions, we did, um, put an ad in the paper kind of describing all of this per DNR and Wisconsin State statute. So that ran last Thursday, I believe. If you do get questions, please feel free to ask me. Send residents that you have questions to me. It is also posted on the project website, kind of a fuller description of what happened.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, let's see. Oh, village board, uh, announcements, comments, communications, Lynn?
I have two really good pieces of news. Uh, the first is that this afternoon I got a notification that we were approved for the free native plants, uh, that we had or that we are planning for a potential rain garden. The process of getting all of those approvals is still in process. So we will pick up those plants and I will keep them alive until we can plant them in the ground. I think I can do that. And, uh, the second piece is that we were notified last week, I believe, that five of the six sites that we proposed to the EV, uh, charge-up commission have been selected for the second round of review. Lauren and I will meet with, uh, their engineering team next week to go through the sites and give them all the information that they need. And then that goes on to the next round of review. So, uh, it sounds like, uh, from what I heard this afternoon from the total amount of submissions, uh, the village of Oregon had quite a few, uh, as a part of that total amount that came from the RFP. So I think it positions the village to look really good and to have that, um, accommodation here, uh, for EV charging potentially. And then my last one is just that we have lots of vacancies. Candy sent out an announcement, uh, via e-notified today. Um, we have a village board vacancy. We have some committees, transportation committee. I did it for you, Amanda. You didn't have to do it this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sustainability, we'll have one, park board has one. So check out the website to apply, uh, for any and all of those.
And just to, just to clarify, the village board actually has a deadline of Tuesday, July twenty-ninth at noon.
Say that in their mic.
Yeah, say it in the mic. That's right. The village trustee, um, vacancy and application process will end on Tuesday, July twenty-ninth at noon. So just pay attention to that if you're watching.
Okay. I've mentioned this before. I have requested to speak at the first responders event, August twenty-eighth, which I cannot attend. So we're all kind of perking up until I, until I said, I need volunteers. So anyway, I'm reminding, it's, you're not the featured speaker. There are many speakers, a couple, two or three minutes will do it. Let me know if you're interested. Any other announcements?
Phil, just one quick one. Just reminder again, we do have that joint meeting with the towns and fire district next week, uh, Wednesday, the thirtieth, six-thirty PM here in the community room.
Okay. Anything else? No. Future agenda items, anything to add?
Uh, we, I will get this to Martin and Candy. We will potentially need a small change to the village outreach program. We've been approached to attend an event on September thirteenth. So I'll get all that information, um, but if we could consider that next meeting, that'd be great.
All right. Okay, item twelve, without objection, we are adjourned.
Thank you.